Look at her background.
I know, I saw them earlier.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go join my husband in his room.
Okay.
You gonna allow that?
Richard.
She feeds me, I have to.
Well, welcome, everybody. We are, I think we've got everybody back. For those of you who want to see everyone, you know, up in the upper right-hand corner of your Zoom screen, you can change the view. We've got several pages of people here who have joined us today. And so I'm gonna start our slide deck. Well, welcome to the Rotary Club of Georgetown on this very chilly Friday noon time. And I am George Anne Hewitt, and it's a pleasure to welcome all of you here today. We have a wonderful program ahead, but I'm going to ask Gary Brown to start us off with an invocation.
Morning, everyone. I've got to move a helper here that is trying to walk across my paper. But Lord, help us as Rotarians. Help us always to be patient and kind. Help us not to be boastful, envious, or proud. Protect us from being rude, self-seeking, or easily angered. Teach us not to keep records of wrongs or delight in what's not the truth. Inspire us to spread peace, hope, and perseverance in helping mankind in our community and throughout the world. Please watch over those impacted by the weather, especially those included in accidents, and those impacted by COVID. May they recover if possible. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Gary. And Gary was subbing for Peggy. Gary W. Brown, I didn't see come in, I don't think. So I'm gonna ask David Massering to lead us in the pledge.
May I ask you to just think for a couple of minutes, not, but for a few seconds about the meaning of the words we're about to say, given light of our recent events? With your hand over your heart, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, David. And Reese, are you with us? All right. Wilson, would you do our milestones?
Sure. Birthdays, February 17th, Judge Billy Ray Stubblefield and Michelle Marshall on February 18th. Spouses' birthdays, Roger Chappelle's wife, Lorena, on February 15th. Anniversaries, Jeff and Lizzie Cartlidge, five years on February 13th. And Roger, you're up again. Roger and Lorena Chappelle, 29 years, February 15th. Stephen and Nancy Benold, 44 years, February 17th. And club anniversaries, Vanessa Redd, six years on February 21st. Salute, everyone.
Right. Now it's time to introduce our guests. So do we have anybody who has brought a guest that they would like to introduce to the club?
I do, George Anne. It is my pleasure to introduce a couple of people. Most of you know at least one of them, Joseph and Michelle Carey. Michelle has been an avid supporter, both of them are, of the Field of Honor. Joseph and Michelle are sponsors. Michelle represents Honor Flight Austin as an affiliate, and they've both been volunteers. So I call that the trifecta. They're both interested in joining our club, so they're here visiting to explore just that. Please help me welcome them.
Good to be here. Thank you all.
Welcome. We're very glad to see you. And thank you for all the volunteering you have already done. We know that service is important to you, like it is to us, so.
Also, George Anne, we have with us today Carol Powell from Ride On Center for Kids. She's watching and is very interested in our club. I've also asked Tommy Hall to join us, but I didn't see that he was able to ring yet. So he may not be with us. So those are the two that I know of. So welcome, Carol.
Yes, welcome. Thank you very much, George. Any other introductions? And I know we have Carolyn Holloway with us today, and I thought we might be joined by Shannon Coleman. I don't know, did Shannon get to join us? Are there any other visiting Rotarians? Well, we're very glad all of you are here. We're meeting in a virtual environment and have been since around November 19th, I think, when Williamson County went into red phase with regard to COVID. We do plan to go back to meeting in a hybrid format where we offer both in-person and online access to our meetings, but we won't be doing that until we move out of the red phase. And so we're watching and preparing for that. So it's very important, I think I said in your weekly update this week, keep looking at our communications and watch for any new information about meeting details. The next thing I wanted to show, and I'm hoping Jeannie will say a little something about this, is she has, since we had our wonderful celebration of Field of Honor and the money that was raised from flag dedications, she has been out delivering checks. And so she shared pictures with me. Jeannie, would you say a little bit about these trips that you're making and who these people are?
I'd be happy to, George Anne. It's been such a wonderful experience to be able to go and present these checks personally, even though we recognize them all together as a club on our celebration of the Field of Honor. On the left, of course, we, last Monday, as a matter of fact, I was at USO Fort Hood, and they want to do so much more with us for the Field of Honor this year and in future years. They were just delighted. Everybody, of course, is delighted to receive money, but Isabel is just super committed to supporting us and to doing more with us as partners. The guys from Veteran Outdoors were delightful. We met at MCO and had a really great conversation, and they too want to step up even more and do more with the Field of Honor. But they told me that because of our check to them, and they were one of the major recipients, that we could very feasibly have saved 24 lives, because that meant, that translated to 24 people being able to do things together with Veteran Outdoors that kept them from being depressed or helped them with their anxiety. And all these veterans who really, really need that kind of support. And on the right, of course, our friends from VFW. They were thrilled also and continue to support us year after year. And that commitment came through again yesterday, or when we were, not yesterday, when we met with them. Yesterday morning, Michael and I braved the ice and whatever else the elements brought, and we went out to TSTC. There's another picture that I just received like moments before the meeting started, but we have pictures of several. And we'll be sending out a press release to be able to cover these and hopefully have some additional exposure through the sun and other media. But thank you for giving me the opportunity to go do that and personally reinforce the relationship that we have with so many organizations and individuals. Thank you, George Anne.
Thank you, Jeannie. We appreciate it. All of the work that goes into Field of Honor is fun, but I would say that the opportunity to get to see the smiles on the faces of our recipients and know how much the assistance that we are providing them is going to help them with their service in the community is very rewarding. Next, I want to just mention, and I don't know if Nathan or Jeff, if you're on, but in this week's weekly update, I attached the Invitational Golf Tournament signup for teams. And it may seem like a long way off, but May 28th will be here soon. And it's really important that we start talking this up in the community. Jeff or Nathan, do you want to add anything about our golf tournament? I saw Nathan on earlier, but he may, I don't know about, anyway, if you would, please share those with others. And if you have a team you want to get signed up, I would encourage you to start doing that now. Dennis, would you?
I'm here. Firstly, as I promised last week, I was hopeful of getting my second shot this week for my vaccination. And as luck would have it, I joined Nick as having both of my shots. And I just want to mention the happenstance. On Monday, I'm trolling through everything to see if there's anybody who's got a second shot. And I went to Bell County, and I went through every day of the month, right to the end of the month, and nothing was there. And then when I finished off, I clicked on Tuesday, the next day. Lo and behold, there were two appointments available. So Max and I got both of our shots, and so I've committed $5 to getting two shots. It's on my Happy Dollars. So anybody else want to share some Happy Dollar stories? Don't be shy.
I see David.
I can, yeah, I kind of already, already shared the story, but the three of us were able to get our first shot. So I'll be happy to chip in a buck each.
Where are you guys finding the shots?
You're just cool.
Yeah. Scott, mine was just happenstance. I happened to work Monday and Tuesday for for the, as a volunteer, to enroll people and make appointments. And they called us early Wednesday morning and said they had three appointments, they had three shots left over. Would we like them? So.
Good for you.
Enough for me, yeah.
I'll chip in four bucks. We got our first shots last Thursday, so.
Oh, right.
In Bell County.
In Bell County.
And we had to move very fast to get them too. It's, they're.
Where was that, Mike? Where was that?
Bell County, up at Temple. Temple Community Center up there, they, they were fantastic.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they have a, they have a special list that they draw if they have an emergency or they have some leftover. And we're going to see that more and more, because, you know, eventually more people that signed up for five or 10 places like me won't show up for another shot. So be alert.
All right. Anybody else out there?
No babies? Dennis, I'll chip in two bucks, because last weekend, we became the proud owners of two new adopted dogs. They're more than puppies, but they're not super mature. So we now have a brand-new environment in our household. But, so I'll chip in two bucks, one for each of them. But then I've got to figure out a way to how to recruit the over $700 worth of veterinary bill that we took them to this week. And I may be looking for a hundred bucks pretty soon.
Oh, that's not the Happy Dollar. That's the Sad Dollar.
That's the Sad Dollar, yeah.
Just the beginning, Todd.
You'll recoup that in affection.
So far, so good.
Dennis, I'll chip in five bucks. Speaking of dogs, my wife and I rescued a 13-year-old lab from the Georgetown Animal Shelter. We saw the picture in the paper, and we said, oh, we can't leave that. And she seems to be very happy with our cats and other dogs. I'm up to three dogs and three cats right now.
Did you say that's a five-dollar?
Yes, sir, five.
Okay, I got you for five. Perfect.
He could be committed for that.
All right. I think we're good to go now, guys.
Thanks, Dennis. Appreciate it. For those of you who are visiting, these Happy Dollars are contributed to our Polio Plus Fund, and every $2 provides a vaccine for children to protect them against polio. So that's what we raise that money for. All right. Dr. Swain, did you jump on?
I did. I'm here.
Very good. I'm gonna let you introduce our program.
Okay, George Anne, you might want to remind our members to mute their phones. I just heard some feedback, so we don't want to interrupt our speaker.
Okay.
And I should apologize, because I neglected to make this introduction when we were introducing visitors. Our guest speaker is Ron Shelley, and I'll say a few words about Ron, but accompanying Ron this afternoon is Ben Lake. I don't see Ben on the screen, but, okay, yeah, I see Ben there. Ben is a member of the Board of Sleep and Heavenly Peace. He's a graduate of Southwestern University. He's Chair of the Board of Trustees, wearing that jacket there. He's Chair of the Board of Trustees at the First United Methodist Church and is one of the technicians who's responsible for producing our worship service each week. So Ben is very active. He and his wife, Jennifer, have two lovely children and very active in our congregation. So welcome, Ben. Neglected to introduce you as a visitor. Our presenter this afternoon is no stranger here in Georgetown, and I'm sure that many of you know him, so I won't spend a lot of time introducing him. His bio is on the cover of The Trumpet. And I just want to just lift up that my interactions with Ron Shelley, and both of us are RS, so we have to make sure that we say Ron Shelley or Ron Swain. And Ron Shelley, in my experience and interaction with him, is a man with a servant's heart. He's a volunteer tutor with our Helping Hands tutoring ministry at First Methodist Church. He served on a number of committees at the church. He's been very active serving on many of the boards of nonprofit organizations in our city. And I'm sure he'll say more about his encounter and experience with Sleep and Heavenly Peace. But he is a man who has really been a role model in many respects to those of us who see service above self as a calling. And Ron has really given of himself and his resources to help improve lives for so many in our community. And so without any further reactions or remarks from me, I'd like to just present my friend, Ron Shelley, the other RS.
Okay. I think I'm unmuted. Is it okay?
I hear you, Ron.
Okay. Well, I got best sidekick anybody could ever have in Ben Lake with me, and I see he's alive and well. He just put my first slide up, so he's going to be advancing the slides. And as Ron indicated, I'm here to share a little bit about our new nonprofit here in Georgetown and called Sleep and Heavenly Peace Georgetown, serving Williamson County. And our byline nationally is no kid sleeps on the floor in our town. And the picture is a young lady that was part of a family. It was one of our early deliveries in the Copper's Cove area. There was a, we got a call of the situation, and they were living with their grandmother, who had actually adopted the kids, because they were fixing to be put into the foster care situation. And she had a sister and a brother that were at home at the time. And so we delivered three beds to the youngsters, and then she had an older adult, 17-year-old daughter. So we delivered four beds up there. And as you can see, this little girl, and she saw that comforter, she grabbed hold of it, and the only way they could make the bed is she had to be there, because this was something that was, I mean, they really were in tough circumstances. And we were, we found this a very heartening delivery, but everyone is. As we say there at the bottom, this just brings everybody together. It takes a total community, and we, we not only have to be out beating the bushes to round up volunteers to build beds, which we built about, before COVID, we built about every two months. And of course, we deliver continually before COVID. And so that COVID obviously slowed us down a little bit, but we, we have had a good start. I went up to get the basic training in Twin Falls, Idaho in July of 2018. And the young man there that's got his back to you is Luke Mickelson. He's the founder of Sleep and Heavenly Peace nationally. And this was the initial build for Sleep and Heavenly Peace. And he was a, at the time, a youth director in his church up there, and he knew about a family that had several kids that didn't have beds. So he got his kids together, and you can see they're pretty small, and they went to the garages right around Christmas time, and they built several beds and delivered them. And this, and of course, Twin Falls, Idaho, it's cold. But Luke then has stayed with it. And so as he, as he says here, this is where the service project turned into the beginnings of a nonprofit organization. And he's a highly dedicated individual, and this is a totally volunteer organization from top to bottom. And about 2017, Mike Rowe ran on his podcast a program on Sleep and Heavenly Peace. And then he presented them a new location to build the beds. And it, with that exposure, just took off. And so you can see, unfortunately, we're covered up with the pictures over there, but they were building one, they had the single digits down to, on the beds, until, I'm sorry, that's the new chapters. 2017, we saw good, good growth, and the chapters exploded in 2018. And we now have over 200 chapters in 46 states. 13 chapters are in Texas, pretty much concentrated in the Dallas-Fort Worth area and Houston. And there's a very large chapter in San Antonio. And then if you, if you just go up and down I-35 and start with San Antonio, the next one coming north is in South Austin. And then the next chapter is our chapter. The next chapter on I-35 is Burleson. And then you hit the I-35, or the Dallas-Fort Worth area, and there's quite a few chapters up there. But this is, this is our local group. This is our advisory board that I show you there with Ron's on our advisory board, Ben that's doing our charts. He does our IT work and fabulous support. And then we had some very, very important founding sponsors. And some of them are on the board, Bill and Becky Booth, Bill and Donna Connor, Don and Patty Hewlett, and of course, wife and I. And this is a special group. These guys, they keep us wired into the community, and they have been super, super supportive of the direction of our Sleep and Heavenly Peace in Georgetown, and we appreciate it. And I particularly appreciate the representation of a Rotary Club when you think about Ron and Bill Connor that's on here with us today. And of course, Don, who's been a long time I know Rotarian in Georgetown. But all of these folks are how we got started. This was our team at the end of the first build. And this, this team built 10 beds in about two and a half hours, and we got all the bugs out of our system. And this is primarily a First Methodist Church group. And we were all teed up before COVID to have another build this earlier, this last year, at the beginning of the year, and we had to cancel it. But I'm hopeful that in the next 30 days, we'll have another build. But we're at the point now that when we do have a build, we can build about 25 beds in a space of about two and a half hours. And we're moving to do that. We actually do a pre-cut, get everything lined up, and then we sand and go all the way through the staining process. And later on, we'll show you the activity level when a build is going on via a video we got embedded in this. Okay, Ben? Now, when we deliver, we actually deliver pieces which make it much easier logistically. And so you have a headboard and rails that we screw together. And here's Bill putting a five-and-a-half-inch lag in the, putting the rails on. And then we can make a bunk bed out of this, this is obviously a bottom twin, but we've got a system that, and they're pre-drilled and everything with dowels and these lags, we can build a bunk bed. And we'd probably have a mix of about 50/50 delivering bunk beds versus twin beds. And that's usually just dependent on the family situation and whether they're, they're up to handling a bunk bed situation. And getting a bed is about, is as simple as we can make it. There's no financial need requirement, one or more kids between three and 17. And that's kind of our limits. And Williamson County. Now, we'll stretch at Williamson County, because I told you about I-35 service corridor. There's a lot of counties around us that don't have any access to this, but we've tried to reach out to those and, and help them. The application process is very, very straightforward. We're online, and it's a corporate, it's a corporate website, www.shpbeds.org. And an individual that's aware of a family that needs beds can fill out an application. So that's the referral. And from that, we will make a contact with the individual and do all of our vetting on the individual and then line up a delivery. And again, that process probably just takes a few weeks, and we're delivering. So we try to keep ourselves in a positive inventory position to deliver as quickly as we can. And like I said, other than COVID, we, we roll every, every month, we're delivering beds. Okay? So how do you get involved with Sleep? So how do you get involved with Sleep in Heavenly Peace? We're a volunteer organization. We have build days, we deliver, we conduct, conduct bedding drives. And we emphasize no experience required. Building skills aren't required, but you can develop some when you work on one of these builds. Down in the right-hand corner is an example of a bedding drive, a very successful bedding drive, that was put on by neighbor 58 in Sun City, where they, they put together forty-six, no forty, forty bedding packages, which includes everything but the pillow. And then they got forty of those packages, forty-six pillows, which was just super. They actually were the build team also, but they, with their projects out there by neighborhood, they've been a very good contact. And our contact was Joe Marcus on that. And he did a fabulous job. And, and the gals did the bedding drive. And it was, it was very well done. So typically, just some people like to know what the cost of our operation is. And we deliver a turnkey bed. A bunk bed set with two mattresses is about $400. And there's a number of ways to donate to that. And if you go online, you can see that the money stays local. As long as the people make the require, that make the requirement, put in the zip code that they live in, it'll be sorted and sent directly to our charter. And all the donations that come in via the online situation are sent to our, our chapter. A sponsor, which can be an organization, or as I put down here, the, a lot of company teams, or neighborhoods, or churches, sponsorship is typically ten bunks or twenty twin beds. And that, that calls for about a $4,000 commitment and a bedding drive. So that's, there's a lot of different ways for people to be involved. And the more they get involved, the best way to start is go on a delivery with, go on, do a delivery with us and see the needs. But it's a, it's just a fun activity. And when you then come back and work on a build, you will see that you have quite an opportunity to learn to some, learn to know some new folks and are doing something very productive as you go through. So this is, this is the end of the process. This is a delivery. And for those that you know that Connor's and the booth, this is Becky on the left and Donna on the right. This was one of our first deliveries. And this is the one I mentioned up in Copper's Cove. And so that's the way we leave a bed. And we don't typically get out of the house without the kids getting in the bed. And this was the young man that has two young sisters. And they, they really needed these beds. On the, on the right-hand picture, this was one in Georgetown. And this was a brother and sister and circumstances pretty rough. And we met them, we got done, done in the early afternoon. And we met them as they came off the bus and walked them in to see their new beds. And if I could just tell you what this young man's attitude changed that took place during that session is pretty amazing. He had had a pretty rough day at school and he got off and he was down in the mouth. And he walked into his room and saw what that was. And he just lit up. So it makes an impact. And we all know from an education standpoint, sleeping, getting a good night's sleep is pretty important for your educational process. But again, there's a, one more look at one of our deliveries. The, the young gal there with her daughter, that was a single mother situation down in Taylor. And the one with the three little ones was in Gerald. And you can see as big a smile on the parents' faces as it was on the kiddos. And of course, they decided their playpen was going to be on the top level. And this, these folks had, they, they had a numbers issue that really made it, the need pretty obvious. These kiddos just weren't sleeping in the best conditions. Next, Ben? Okay, we're going to start, we'll show you a video about both our builds and our deliveries. And it'll give you some idea of the dynamics of, and the physical nature of this work. You can start the video, Ben. So we want to thank you for the time and getting to show what we do with this effort. And there's a number of ways to contact us that's shown there on the screen. Feel free. And you can always give me a call to see what's going on. And I'd be happy to find a way to engage you. And as you wrap up, if you've got any questions, I'll be happy to answer your questions. Georgeanne?
Ron, thank you so much. And Ben, yes, everybody can give some applause. Thank you very much. That's incredible.
May I make one, one observation? Ron, Marissa Austin, who's on our board, is also a member of our Rotary Club. And I don't know if Marissa is here now, but she's been very instrumental in helping us identify some of the recipients of these beds.
Wonderful. Does anybody have questions?
Yeah, Georgeanne?
Yes.
And
Hi, Steve.
Ron and Ben and Bill, I'm in that neighborhood 58 in Sun City. And I can tell you, this is just like, we like our Rotary projects. This fits in well. We, we had about 30 or 40 people out there that afternoon. And it was very rewarding. It was fun and fellowship. And very efficient. You don't stand around. I know it's a wonderful, wonderful service you're providing. And thanks for bringing it to us.
Thank you, Steve. Other questions or comments?
I'd like to ask, Georgeanne, does Sleep in Heavenly Peace work with other nonprofits who work with children? For example, could we refer from the advocacy center to you all for beds?
Yes, yeah, for sure. As, as Ron said, Marissa with Casa, she, she's referred clients to us. We're, we're getting very involved with the Williamson County Children's Advocacy Center.
That's who I was wondering about.
Yeah, we've been working with Tiffany Stirham over there. And then we have recently developed a relationship with CPS that we're going to expand on. So, and so those are usually toofers. I mean, those are people that really need them. And are people that have stepped up to be foster parents. They have everything. They have the space and everything. But that way, we let them avoid the cost of the beds for those kids. So, yeah, that's a, that's a primary input mechanism for us. And Ron and Barbara Pierce have been really helpful in having some contacts with the schools and getting, through the counselors, getting referrals to us. So right now, and it's, it's very heartwarming. And at the same time, it's a challenge that right now, we're probably getting our, the best input on needs through the system. And we're going to get a few more people trained up in these caregiving nonprofits to be able to refer more and more clients to us. And the work ethic has been great. So we are getting, we are getting those. So I think the last count, we had a backlog of about thirty-five beds needed. And I know that'll pick up as, not number one, it warms up. Number two, that the more, more discussion is had on this about what we do. We just, and, and our job, we, we go out of our way to never find a way to say no. I mean, we, we're, if somebody's got a requirement, unless it's grossly, grossly outside our rough template, we find a way to get them a bed. And again, I can just tell you, if you're part of an organization that's looking for something to do to get involved with, nothing like being involved with the client. And it's, it's a great experience. And so, yeah, we're working with everyone we know. And if you got any other ones, you got the man there, Ron Swain, you can give him, give him any idea you want to. And we'll run it to ground because it's a great opportunity for, and we, we need to nurture those. This W, this WCCAC deal is going to turn out to be pretty significant. And we also worked with the Grace Table in Round Rock. That's an interim provider for kids that have been put into the foster care system. When there aren't immediate foster parents available, they take them. And we, we replaced about half of their beds early on in the process. So we're engaged in that regard. Yes.
Wonderful.
Georgeanne, I see that someone requested the website in the chat. So, okay, Ben, just put it up.
I was just switching my screen to grab it, but Ben has it. Ben, Ben, there's a compliment in chat. I hope you've seen, we, we, we could put you to use in Rotary with helping out with tech, too. This week, I was a technical glitch on one of our events. So we appreciate people who can do that well. Well, thank you, Ron and Ben, so very much. You, you do exemplify service above self. And so we're so glad to know a little bit more about Sleep in Heavenly Peace.
Thanks, Georgeanne. And thanks for the opportunity. We have some brochures that's got the information on it. And we'd be happy to get some of those to somebody. So if anybody's looking for information, they can get it.
That'd be great. I'm gonna share my screen again real quick before we close. This is our calendar for the next couple of weeks. Just a reminder, we have our weekly meeting of our Racial Unity Committee. Next Friday, we have our board meeting for the club at 10:45 a.m. We will be celebrating Rotary International's 116th anniversary on that week. And then, of course, we have a ramp build ourselves on February 27. There's a District Grants Management Training Seminar on Saturday, the 27. And then our club anniversary, our 59th anniversary is Sunday, February 28. So we have some fun celebrations coming up. And then I have two future dates. I've mentioned these before, but we have a blood drive on April 9. So please get that on your calendar. And our District 5870 Multi-Event Bash at Kalahari Resort in Round Rock is May 14 through 16. Today, I'm going to invite Carol Hardy to provide our Minute of Peace.
Here's a quote from John F. Kennedy. Peace is a daily, slowly eroding old barriers, quietly building new structures.
Talking about Sleep in Heavenly Peace. I'm just, I'm just about through. I'll get right back to you.
Carol, you want to try that again?
Okay, from our president, John F. Kennedy. Peace is a daily, a weekly, a monthly process, gradually changing opinions, slowly eroding old barriers, quietly building new structures.
Thank you. This month, February is, Rotary has dedicated months. And this month is about peace and conflict resolution. Are there any announcements for the good of Rotary? Anybody have anything that would be helpful for others to know? Well, stay warm. I hope everybody's electricity stays on. And I would invite all of you to join me in the four-way test of the things we think, say, or do. First?
Is it the truth?
Second?
Is it fair to all concerned?
Third?
Build goodwill and better friendships.
And fourth?
Be beneficial to all concerned.
We are adjourned.